If you'd please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic called Wichita Sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignak?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have under special order of business first, the introduction of newly-elected Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Janine Durkin. Madam Superintendent?
We, this evening, are able to welcome our, our new employees to our, to our central office team. We are thrilled to welcome, first, Janine Durkin. Janine Durkin, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, will be joining our team in, on, in July. And she's been with us since 1990, working her way through every day, one kid at a time. It's an amazing amount of work. So, Janine, we welcome you. Thank you for being here and welcome you to come forward.
Thank you. I'm honored to accept the position of Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services for the Lowell Public Schools, and I really thank you for your vote of confidence. My thirty years in education, twenty-three working with the students of Lowell, their families, staff, and the members of the greater Lowell community, have been greatly rewarding and enriching in my life. And they're a source of my firm commitment to ensuring that all students, all constituents, see school as safe, supportive, and academically challenging. My professional experience, every day inspires me to learn more. The children inspire me every day to learn more, to a commitment to excellence in education. And I am guided by my core values and belief that support for students and high expectations for students, staff, and teachers greatly increase our students' chances, each and every one of them, of being successful in school. So, as students, as Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, those will be my core values that will guide me every day. And I promise you this, that I will be relentless in my pursuit on behalf of our students, and I am proud to continue my career in Lowell, in this new role with the dedicated professionals of the Lowell Public Schools. So, thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next, we have the introduction of newly-elected Director of Special Education, Jen McChrystal. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. ... I also would like to welcome Jennifer McChrystal to our team. We are very fortunate that we have such a knowledgeable internal candidate to step up to this very, very demanding job. We have worked with Jen so collaboratively for such a long period of time, and we welcome you, Jen, and welcome you to come forward and, and speak to us on, on...
Thank you. Thank you all very much. It is an honor to be here, and I completely appreciate your vote of confidence. I am absolutely thrilled to accept this position. I began teaching in Lowell in the special ed classroom and have had many jobs within the special ed realm, working with the general ed population as well as other special systems, including ELL. And I truly believe in our students and our community and all of the professionals and families that are from Lowell. And I believe if we can have a passion for student and learning, that we are going to build the capacity of our programs and not only improve education for all of the special education students, but all students in Lowell and their families in this community. So, I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I really look forward to working with all of you and all of the administration and the teachers and the students and the families to achieve that goal. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And lastly, we have the introduction of newly-elected Lowell High School Headmaster, Brian Martin. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like for everybody to welcome our new headmaster, Brian Martin. Brian Martin has been an educator for more than fifteen years, but has had many important roles in the city. Brian brings a love for the city of Lowell, but especially a dedication and a commitment to Lowell High that has been extraordinary over the years. And so, I welcome Brian to come forward and just to address the group. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee. I want to thank Superintendent Franco and her administrative team for recommending me and supporting me through the, the process. I want to congratulate Janine Durkin and Jen McChrystal. I think they're fabulous picks and add a strong, strong leadership team to the system. They're terrific people. I've worked with them off and on, and I think they're awesome, awesome choices. I'd like to just say a couple of words. I know, the school committee and Connie Martin asked me to speak for fifteen minutes, but I said I'd cut it down to three. But to speak with you, really from three quick perspectives, first, as a student, I think I explained in my interview, I tried to get this point across to the administrative team and the panel, that as a student, I want, I want Lowell High School to be the school that if a student was a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader, and there were no rules in the city, the charter schools, private schools, they could go anywhere they want, Lowell High School has to be at the top of the list. So, we have to be an exciting, innovative, fun, safe place for students that know that if I go to Lowell High School, I'm going to have the best education this community can offer, beating everyone else. That's what we want to do. As a parent, and I think I can speak as a parent, because my children went to Lowell High School, that a parent wants their child to be treated the same, whether you're the best student, best athlete, or the lowest-ranked student in the school, that's going to give everything they can every day. And I think Janine Durkin spoke about her remarks. You want everyone to give each one of those students the very best, and I'm going to make sure that that happens. And people that have worked with me in the past know that my expectations are high, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to lower them at all. And then finally, as the administrator for the school, there's a business piece, there's a private sector piece, and I think the multitude of positions that I've had are going to bring a different perspective to the school. I, I hope that I can add value in places where I have an expertise and also show the leadership skills to listen to the, the professionals that have been there, that are going to have institutional knowledge that I don't have. But I do know this, that I do have the capacity to listen and learn and take people from where they are and try to make it better by bringing the support that I think I can bring to the position. So, that's where I'm coming from, and I'm looking forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to the three of you. Next, we have the minutes, approval of the minutes of the regularly-scheduled meeting of Wednesday, April 17th, 2013. Motion to approve by Mr. Gignak, seconded by Mr. Leary, all those in favor. Signified as saying aye, opposed, so voted. Under permission to enter, we have permission to enter for May 1st, 2013. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Archway Incorporated for $172,159 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Carding School Incorporated for $82,829 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To Easter Seals, New Hampshire Incorporated, the amount of $108,209 to provide for the out-of-district tuition for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Evergreen Center Incorporated, the amount of $250,915 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for three students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEPs, again, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition. Hillcrest Educational Centers Incorporated, $95,815 to provide for out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding by FY Special Education Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Justice Resource Institute Incorporated, in the amount of $97,597 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the, in the Special Education IEP, provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget School Department Tuition Account. To the Lab Collaborative Incorporated, in the amount of $242,614 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for two students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Landmark School Incorporated, the amount of $48,162 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in their Special Education IEP, again, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Tuition Special Education Tuition Account. To the Lighthouse School Incorporated, in the amount of $640, I'm sorry, $646,129 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for ten students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Little People's School Incorporated, in the amount of $41,678 to provide for tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in their Special Education IEP, funding by Special Education Department FY Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To Melmac, New England Incorporated, the amount of $246,929 to provide for out-of-district tuition costs for two students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department Budget FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the New England Long Term Care Incorporated, doing business as New England Pediatric Care, the amount of $471,498 to provide the out-of-district tuition account, costs for eight students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding, again, provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. For the Perkin School for the Blind, in the amount of $526,065 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for three students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by Special School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Professional Center for Handicapped Children Incorporated, in the amount of $141,316 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for two students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in their Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY Budget Special Education Tuition Account. Schools for Children Incorporated, the amount of $65,366 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding by School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To St. Anne's Home Incorporated, the amount of $483,129 to provide for the out-of-district costs for ten students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by School Department FY Budget, 14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Children's Center for Communication Incorporated, the amount of $74,200 to provide for out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding, again, provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the Judge Rottenberg Educational Center Incorporated, in the amount of $361,422 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To the May Institute Incorporated, in the amount of $165,979 to provide out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in their IEP, with, by the School Department FY-14 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. To Mark Romanowski, M.D., P.C., the amount of $10,000 to provide physical examinations of candidates for athletic teams in Lowell Public Schools, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Athletic Contracted Services. To Banner Pest Control, in the amount of $86,120 to provide monthly maintenance pest control service and spot treatment services in public school buildings over the next three years, funding provided by the School Department FY-14 Budget Building Maintenance Account.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the superintendent. The bottom of page four, the Judge Rottenberg Educational Center for the one student of Is this, is this the same, is this the same student that we discussed last year? Or additional student?
Mr. Conway, I do not know if it's the same student. I believe it may be, but I do not have that information.
Would anybody know here?
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, it is, yes, it is the same student.
And I, and I think that when we, we talked about this last year, did we take a look and see if there was any other facility that, that still could meet the, the needs of the, and the, the outline of the IEP? And we, we couldn't find one?
Yes, that is correct. We did.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
I just had a question with regard to the allocation to Dr. Romanowski for athletic candidate, physical exams. I wonder why these same exams aren't being performed by the family's own providers and/or done in tandem or in partnership with Lowell Community Health Center? I mean, we do have a health center within the high school. You know, these are costs that could be incurred, you know, through insurance. So, I'm, just a question as to why, is this just a longstanding practice? Or has any other alternative ever been looked at? Is there a reason why there's one specific doctor that performs all these exams? Thank you.
Madam Superintendent? Mr. Lane?
Thank you. Dr. Romanowski has been the, the team physician, basically, for the high school sports for as long as I can remember. He provides the physicals to students primarily who do not have health and, health insurance to, to go to their own doctor. It's my understanding when you're going to try out for a sport or participate in a sport, you have to have medical clearance, and kids can either bring the necessary forms from their own doctors indicating they've had the clearance, or come see Dr. Romanowski if they haven't. He comes to the school for the physicals. He also does certain times of the year where he's out at the stadium with, say, the football team or some of the more higher-risk sports as far as injuries go. So, this would cover all of the physicals as well as his being at some of the different sporting events and providing medical assistance if necessary.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
I mean, I can speak very well to the fact that I know that Lowell Community Health Center would never turn away a child having a physical exam for lack of insurance, primarily because they would work with the family to obtain such insurance. I mean, having healthcare in this state is state law, and there are very, very few people in this state now who don't have insurance. So, I think those, those that are uninsured would be very few and far between, and certainly can be handled through one of our health centers here in the city. Just a thought. Thank you.
Any further discussion? And stand a motion to approve, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yeah.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignak?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Next, we have contract ratification for the Lowell School Administrators Association, LSAA. What's the wish of the committee? Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignak. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignak?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Next, we have memorials. Walter J. Wilk, father of Joanne Cupa, Administrative Assistant Curriculum and Instruction Office. And Edward J. Wilk, retired Butler School teacher, father-in-law of Ann Marie Wilk, retired Lowell High School teacher. Ann Hickey Lalasha, grandmother of Christopher Hickey, Malloy School teacher, and former mother-in-law of Christina Hearn, Lincoln School teacher. And Stacy DiVincenzi, former wife of Michael DiVincenzi, Lowell High School Department Head. If you'd all please rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers. May they rest in peace. Next, we have motions. First motion by Mr. David Conway to ask the superintendent to look into the feasibility of sending a regular communication to the designated Lowell neighborhood groups. These communications should include information on our school-wide initiatives, upcoming events, important dates to remember, and other information pertaining to our schools. Seconded by Mr. Gignak, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to a few of the people in the neighborhoods, and, you know, they were asking some questions about the schools, and they, one of them happened to mention that it might be a good idea if we could get as much information as possible. Needless to say, you know, we, we mentioned the, the fact that you can go to the website and so forth, but again, I think that if it's not too much of a, a task, if the, if we could somehow send a regular type of communication, perhaps once a month, again, that's just a suggestion, and I know that the superintendent sends out her newsletter, and that might be something that's probably very appropriate, because that is certainly information that's very important to the school system. And I, I think that if we could send that to the, I believe it's eight or nine designated neighborhood groups, and I think they could take that information and, and certainly get it to their, to their membership. So, anyways, I think it's just another way of, of giving as much information as possible. And I know a couple of our colleagues mentioned, I think it was Ms. Ross Sikewich talked about and, and Ms. Scott talked about the budget, you know, and I know that we'll be putting in important dates, so at least, at least the neighborhood groups will, will know when these, when these important dates are coming up, and we can alert them to it, so if they want to come down and take a look at what's going on, or if they want to watch it on television. Again, just another source of information for them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly support this motion. I would be curious if there would be a way that we may be able to access kind of a, through the Department of Planning and Development, I believe that there is a Neighborhood Services component, that we'd be able to perhaps communicate all of our information through them. I think some of the, certainly the district-wide information and all that would be really helpful, but I think if you're certainly looking at a, you know, any one of the neighborhood groups, they could really benefit from getting, you know, most of our schools do have, whether it's weekly, bi-weekly, a newsletter, just adding perhaps the head of each, each community group, each neighborhood group to that list, whether it's an electronic list or even a snail mail list, just as part of our regular, everyday, you know, kind of mode of doing business, then they'd be getting the constant information that they'd be able to share with their, with their membership. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do receive through the parent liaisons every month, a newsletter of all the events happening at the school. I support this motion. I think it'd be very easy to add the email addresses to that distribution list of each of the schools. I mean, it's already exists, so it's just adding another person to it. And the school websites, the calendar section is very accurate. I went through and checked them yesterday with all of the events coming up, the spaghetti suppers, and, and I think involving the community would be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify as saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Ms. Ross Sikewich and Mr. James Leary, request the superintendent to provide the school committee the administration's recommendations for the future use of our district buildings to include our general alternative, alternative and central administrative buildings. Not requiring a second, Ms. Ross Sikewich or Mr. Leary? One of you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, there's been a lot of discussion in our subcommittees of late around the use of our buildings, in particular, conversations around the potential use of or reuse of the Roger School, where we currently have our administration building. And it's also been light talk of, you know, perhaps consolidating schools, are we going to open up a new school, you know, open up the Roger School back to a school again? And, and then we have, are also having conversations with regard to our alternative schools, and how are we, and we're realigning those, and how do they fit into the whole grand scheme of our, our, our building inventory? So, that's the reason for this, just to sort of give, to work with us, to give us a clearer direction, so we're not just shooting in the dark, and so that we can support, you know, those recommendations and move them forward.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, I think in addition to that, really, we've heard a lot of discussion of sometimes Central might move to a different school location. Just kind of getting your thoughts and paper in terms of like that dialogue. It doesn't have to be done in the next couple of weeks. I would envision this something toward the summer, when things settle down after the budget started, beginning that thought process. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify as saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have subcommittees. The Lowell High School Subcommittee reporting approval of the minutes of the meeting of Thursday, April 25th, 2013. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, want to thank Claire Abrams, Assistant Superintendent, for putting this, this report together. Again, it seems as though Lowell High School reports, they're very lengthy and involved, so again, I, I thank you very much, and as usual, I apologize for the lengthy report. The meeting started off at six o'clock, and the present, we had myself as the chair, Robert Gignak, and also Kristen Ross Sikewich, and the members that were present, Kim Scott and James Leary. And from central administration, we had Gene Franco, Superintendent, and Claire Abrams, Assistant Superintendent. And the other individuals that were there at the meeting was Dr. Wendy Jack, who was Lowell High School Curriculum Director, Roger Mono, Science and Health Education Department Head, and Elizabeth Conway, Attorney-at-Law at Cooley, Mannion &amp; Jones. The agenda, we started off with the distracted driving presentation. Second was update on reception area. Third, update on buyback program. And the fourth one is updated discussion on outstanding motions addressing the following: Lowell High School technology, science labs, programmatic improvements to support at-risk grade-nine students at Lowell High School. And the, the first agenda item, distracted driving presentation, I thought it was, it's something I think was, is, is going to be very helpful to our students here at Lowell High School. Dr. Jack was the one that, actually, Dr. Jack and attorney Elizabeth Conway, who also happens to be my daughter, they, they have been working back and forth together on this, and basically, it's, it's about the, the fact that a gentleman, Joel Feldman, who lost his daughter, 21-year-old daughter, to a distracted driver, and he helped to put this together, this program, and he thought it was extremely important. And again, I know that it's going throughout the entire country, and it's something that we certainly can benefit by. It, it, it doesn't cost us any money. Any kind of monies that were incurred in this particular area, it seems like it's, it's picked up by Cooley, Mannion, and Jones Law Firm. So, again, I think we certainly will welcome this, this program to Lowell High School. There was a, a video, a DVD, that was played, and it was called "Just a Few Seconds." I previewed that video the day before. It's about a three-minute video, and, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree with me. It was a, it was a very, it was a very moving three minutes. And... And again, we've talked about, you know, there's been a lot of talk about texting and driving. This goes beyond that. It's, it's doing anything in the car that's going to distract people. And I think that we perhaps have all been guilty of that. If you take a look at some drivers, they're eating, they're, they're reading a paper, they're taking, they're, they're on the phone. It's so many different things that can happen. And all it, all they're, they're saying is that just in a matter of a split second, it can change many, many lives. And right now, Dr. Jack and, and Attorney Conway are working together to come up with a date that's going to be advantageous to, to both sides, both parties. I think that a suggestion was made, I believe, by Ms. Ross Sikewich to, that, they were talking about having this right with the 12th grade, right before graduation, before the prom, which I think is a great idea. The, but the suggestion was also made that perhaps the rest of the school could also see this, see this program. And it's, the program is a very interactive program. And again, I think it's something that we certainly, I think we're very, very fortunate they will be coming to Lowell High School. Mr. Gignac made a motion. Second by Ms. Ross Sikewich, to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress. That was three to nothing, accepted. The second point that we, we talked about here on the agenda was the update on the reception area. The, finally, we have somebody that is sitting there. And I know that this has been a motion that Mr. Leary has, has brought forward in the past and has discussed about it, discussed the situation quite often on the floor. It's something that's extremely important to try to make the, the school, all our schools as safe as possible. It's just a matter of working out the logistics. And at this particular point, we do have a security guard that is manning that station. We also have, I believe, a total of eight security guards at Lowell High. One is manning that station. Another one is taking a look at the cameras. And there's another one that's on, I believe, a three-to-11 shift. So that leaves us with five security guards. And again, it's a very complicated setting. It is not your normal setting. It's not a cookie cutter setting. We've got three buildings. We have a million square feet. We have over 3,500 individuals that, and I think here is the problem. The 3,500 students and faculty are literally moving, I believe, every 52 or 53 minutes in the course of the day, going from one building to the other. So these doors are constantly, you know, being opened up and closing. So it's, again, it's a complicated situation. I think that the point that did come up was the fact of maybe what the administration has to do is sit down, administration at the high school, sit down, reevaluate the situation and find out, do we need more security guards? And if so, we need this information prior to the budget so that we can discuss this and that we can make some intelligent decisions on, on how to approach it. So I think that that was something that we did mention. I do believe that Dr. Jack will be going back and giving that information to the headmaster and the other, the other administrators. And the, there was a motion by Ms. Ross Sikewich and second by Mr. Gignac to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept the report of progress, report of progress. The third was an update on buyback program. This was in regards to the, a motion that was put on by myself. Ask the superintendent for report on the number of buybacks for period-one classes at the school during the last school year and the current school year. And basically, basically, the report came back that there really wasn't much of a change in the last, the last couple of years. I think from 12 to 14 or 12 to 15 U grades or unsatisfactory grades. Dr. Jack did explain that the change in the attendance policy has played a role into the buyback program. The advisory period has also, was also discussed, and we talked about that before. In the beginning of September 2014, it would be back in place. Again, I think it's a perfect example of trying something different and, and then analyzing it, looking at the data, and finding out that perhaps things were a little bit better with the other procedure that we had. And I think that certainly the housemasters, I think the teachers, the guidance counselors, I think, would applaud going back to the advisory period because it just gives a little bit more stability on, on trying to find students at a particular time. The, there was a motion by Mr. Gignac, second by Ms. Ross Sikewich, to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress. The fourth, updated discussion on outstanding motions addressing the following: Lowell High School technology, science labs, programmatic improvements to support at-risk grade-nine students at Lowell High School. Technology, Apple TV pilot program, 32 teachers received iPads on Friday before the vacation. And on May 7 to the 10th, these 32 teachers, along with Lowell High School Department heads, will participate in a two-day training program, who was, actually is run by Apple in conjunction with the Lowell High School and the, and the Lowell Public Schools Technology Department. The computer lab updates. We have two new Macintosh labs that have been installed. Lowell High School music lab has been updated with new Macintosh computers. Lowell High School engineering lab has been updated with new PCs to support the AudioCAD program. Lowell High School graphic arts lab was updated with new Macintosh computers. The shared computer labs of 312 and 145 had new Macintosh computers installed. And again, this is, these are, these are things that, that have been long overdue. And, and I think that, you know, certainly graduate the, the school committee for pushing the fact that technology is something that certainly is important and something that, you know, we've certainly have been lacking in that area. And, and I think that there has been a concentrated effort by the school committee to try to bring this up into the 21st century. Science lab, 21st century classroom project, three Apple TV pilot program. Teachers will have their classrooms updated in conjunction with the Apple TV pilot program. Along with the Apple TV upgrade, these classrooms will have their traditional desks replaced with rolling workstations. The rolling workstations will allow for many of our existing lab experiences to be conducted within the science classroom. And again, this will allow the teachers and the students to maximize the Apple TV technology that will be, you know, basically the, the center of attention and centerpiece of the classroom. Science department, with the assistance of Mr. Silva, is looking into purchasing virtual lab software that will be comparable with the Apple TVs. An example of this version is a science class at Lowell High School performing virtual dissection on individual iPads as the teacher models the dissection on the Apple TV monitors. Again, there are a lot of changes that are taking place here. And I think that there certainly are going to be a very positive, it's going to be a positive effect on our students. As part of the SOI submitted by the MSBA by Mr. Jay Lang earlier this month, the status of the traditional labs at Lowell High School was included in the core educational spaces section of the report. And the last part was the, the freshman academy intervention programs to support the struggling students. And again, this is, you know, we're going after the ninth grade. That's an area of concentration because a lot of our students tend to fall by the wayside in the ninth grade and the beginning of the 10th. There were a couple of concentration, concentrated areas, one in English, and that was to create small, sheltered grade-nine ELA classes for targeted at-risk students. And also request ELL certified tutors to work directly in ELA classrooms, co-teach inclusions class for students with IEPs, and update the READ 180 program. On the math area, develop a course entitled Transition to Algebra. I think that used to be pre-algebra, but for students that are not ready for Algebra I in grade nine, the course will help students, I think, acquire some basic skills, skills that they're not quite ready for Algebra I. And identified students will take a transition to Algebra and Algebra seminar in grade nine. Identified students take Algebra I in grade 10 rather than nine and trying to limit that class size to 20. A motion by Mr. Gignac, second by Ms. Ross Sikewich, to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress in total. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that all, Mr. Conway?
Well, that's the first section. There are three other sections.
Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Gignac. Mr. Leary?
Thank you. Just to go back to the security guard issue, there was, I guess, two specific motions. One's about a year and a half old, give or take. The second one came up two meetings ago. I think more specifically, it was, it was a recognition, I think, of the complexity of what we were dealing with with that structure, the entrance level at the high school. And the recognition, I think there was a consensus here among the committee, that we needed to retool and re-envision how that worked. I think initially, it came out with the positions of employees. But that motion also clearly went into more of a, more comprehensive. Let's look at the employees being security guards. Let's look at recommendations for professional development. Look, let's look at recommendations in terms of the staffing, how has, as in the number of folks that we have in that environment. I think that, at that point, I think the consensus was that we were going to have those recommendations come back. I don't envision them coming back within two weeks of the motion because it was pretty, especially the professional development, was challenging. How do you go out and get the proper professional development? What type of resources should we be looking at in terms of the numbers of staff? What timeframes do we need to have that staff? What are the other complexities in terms of the structure of the doors? I mean, one of the things that we know, that we had to delay the new doors and the locks because of the challenges getting a bidder that would do it within a realistic price as well as having any competition among bids. The letter we got back, I thought, was, was out of frustration in terms from the headmaster, was out of frustration that we instructed him to make these changes immediately. My understanding, and perhaps I'm missing a bigger point here, was that we didn't want those changes to be made immediately. We wanted to regroup, refocus, and take a look at how we would be able to put that position in a true safety fashion, successfully. Not just the fact that, hey, we got a human being sitting at a desk. How would we do that and then give them the support that they would need in terms of professional development to do it effectively? That motion that we had two weeks ago, and I guess, and maybe this wasn't the response to it, but that motion hasn't been responded to. And I don't know why, and I don't really have a response, something by just more of a venting, I guess. Why are we getting a response two weeks later that didn't address any part of that motion? Again, it wasn't something that could come back in two weeks. The professional development alone would take some time to research. The development in terms of the budget and resource staff would have to probably come through the budget process. Granted, that's coming up in the next few weeks. Just a comment, I don't think we should be getting answers to motions. First, it didn't answer the motion. We shouldn't even get that before us to review. It's not something that had addressed the motion that the entire committee voted for. It is a serious issue. It's not an issue that we can do it alone as a committee. We need to work in collaboration with the high school. I know there's another safety consultant report that'll be coming out as well that I'm sure would add a lot of value to it. I didn't want to keep talking about it, but I think this is an area where we get a motion that has specific instructions that the entire body votes for, that we need to have that addressed. And if there's issues with understanding what that motion's about, that we should have a discussion about that. And I think that's something that needs to happen, happen quickly. Again, I don't expect the motion to be, I mean, personally, I don't know how you could answer the motion in two weeks. It's just simply not practical. Thank you.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Just for my own edification, was this just provided as an update with regard to the reception desk? Was it just an update? I mean, I know it certainly does not address the, the very comprehensive motion that we presented and voted on several weeks back. But, you know, it truly is a concern for our high school. I mean, our school is safe, no doubt. But there are safety needs that need to be addressed. And certainly, training and professional development is part of that larger picture. And certainly can't be facilitated in a matter of two weeks. Thank you.
And Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, just to answer Mr. Leary's concern, as an immediate emergent step, we made sure that the security guard was put into place. And, and that was accomplished as quickly as possible. That by any means does not answer the need for the future, what the coverage is like, what kind of professional development has to happen. So for us to be able to make sure that we have that coverage in that whole setup area, we did that. But that does not mean that within the budget process that we will not have other suggestions for staffing. But especially for that whole professional development piece. Just because somebody is hired as a security person at a high school does not mean that they have the background or the training for that particular. So I am in no position thinking that it is totally answered. But I will say that they were put, yeah, we did put somebody in place immediately just so we could answer the first emergent part of that motion.
Mr. Conway and then Mr. Gignac?
Just very quickly, I think that that's, I think that Mr. Leary makes certainly a good point. And that is that it's, it's an involved situation. And I think, I mean, he's right, in two weeks, you're not going to, this is a very, very comprehensive solution that's going to be needed in order to try to make this as, as safe as, as safe as possible. I think that as far as the report is concerned, it certainly is my impression that, that I think they were just putting, just a safeguard, just stop guard, should we say, just putting somebody in there because of the fact that it went week after week after week. And, and the seat is vacant. So, which was kind of a waste of time and a waste of money. So I think this was their, should we say, first step to try to make things a little bit more, a little bit more effective. But there's no doubt about it. They have to go into a much more comprehensive program that is going to, is going to, as, as we've seen already, going to bring in a lot of different partners in order to make this work. It, it's going to be difficult, but it's something that's needed and it has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was a little put off by the response from the high school regarding the reception desk in the main lobby. I do, however, have a few recommendations on what we should do with that position in that, in, from conversations with Dr. Howe and some security staff who contacted me after the decision was made. There are a few issues that came up. And one of that is downtime. Now, people aren't walking in the door all day long every five minutes. There's a lot of downtime in that position. And I believe it was mentioned here months ago that we could possibly feed in some cameras into that seat. That way, that person, when there's nobody entering the building, they can, you know, skim a few cameras and take care of that. Also, from what I understand, as people enter the building, they're checking the ID of the person and writing it down in a logbook. Now, that might have made sense 30 years ago. However, we're in a technological age where you can simply scan your legal identification card and all your information will pop up. And you can easily print out an ID badge. And it's, it's very simple. There are plenty of programs out there that are rather inexpensive that will completely solve that issue. Also, what was brought to my attention, and I've discussed this many times on this, on the floor, is that the high school is the only school in the district without a buzzer and an exterior camera where people don't have to buzz in to enter. They simply walk in the front door and then go to the front desk. Now, that might seem like something simple, and it might not be necessary to some people. However, there's a safeguard there for the person sitting at that desk. If somebody's approaching the building and they don't feel safe with that individual, they don't have to let them in. Currently, that's not an option. They can simply walk in. So when we do get the new doors, I think that's something we should look at is, is putting the buzzer system in and additional security camera. That way, the security personnel will have that ability. Also, this is a little off-topic, but the, the, one of the issues with that position was the heat. And that it's a... the heat in that it's a, it gets very cold out there in the winter. So the solution was to put some baseboards in. I thought the baseboards would be put in against the wall or something like that, but it's actually a heater that comes from the ceiling. And apparently, that is not comfortable for whoever's sitting there, and it can cause, it's actually more harm than it is good, even on a cold day. So maybe we can look at that because if someone's sitting out there for six, seven hours, I'd rather them not get a sunburn on the top of their head when they're just trying to stay warm. So just a few recommendations. I realize that this is a complex position, it's not going to be fixed overnight, however, I don't think it's brain surgery, so it shouldn't be taking us months and months to figure out what a person that needs to sit at the front entrance should be doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Senior partner saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have the Curriculum Subcommittee report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Thursday, April 25, 2013. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At our meeting, we did have present from the Subcommittee, myself, Mr. Leary, and Ms. Scott. Also present from Central Office were Superintendent Franco, Assistant Superintendent Abrams, and we had a report from our Title I Director, Patricia Kajeka. We had five different topics that we discussed. First off was a discussion of our Level Three Priority Schoolwork. This was a report basically that was prompted by questions that came from the committee wanting to get an update on exactly where we are in this process, working with our priority Level Three schools for our community, just so they're aware they are, the Bartlett Community, Mc Avenue, the Riley, the Shaughnessy, Stocklosa, and Sullivan. They're all in, well, both the Riley and the Sullivan are fairly far along in this process. And then we have the Bartlett, Mc Avenue, Shaughnessy, and Stocklosa, who are, I guess, catching up at this point, we'd say. I think the key date as we're looking at this for the final evaluation of both organizational data that's being reviewed as well as the student data, is that we're going to be looking to have this entire process completed by the end of June. Listed in our minutes is that we'd be expecting a report in June. Based on the conversation, I believe we had said we would expect that in July, just, if it's ready in June, that would be great. But recognizing that it would probably take through the end of the school year and giving a little bit of a cushion there, so that the Subcommittee did request that we get an update at that point when all of the, all of the work has been done and we can see exactly what the kind of causal relationships are and what the plans are, most importantly, to improve performance at those schools as we move forward. Our second update was on the sports-themed schools. This was very exciting news for the district, that we're going to be looking at a very generous donation from the United States Tennis Association. They're going to be outfitting all of our middle schools and two of our elementary schools with rackets and balls and collapsible nets. They're also, I think perhaps most importantly, going to be providing professional development across the district so that our staff will be able to take full advantage of this new equipment and ensure that our students really get the best, the best exposure to it and that we can really incorporate it into our physical education offerings in a comprehensive and effective way. The final three topics, and I would ask my colleagues' indulgence if we could take, from the superintendents' reports, if we could take items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty out of order on the agenda and bring them into the Subcommittee report, unless we'd like to discuss this twice, which sometimes it feels like we do. Thank you.
Senior partner saying aye, opposed, so voted. Ms. Martin?
Perfect. First topic for discussion would be the, I'll start with the school committee calendar, which seems like it would be the simplest. This is basically just a listing for the next year of when the school committee will be meeting. One proposed change that I would recommend and that the Subcommittee did indeed recommend for the full committee's consideration, the July meeting is, and I'm looking here, Superintendent Franco, with the July 10th date, that represents the change that we were hoping to make. There is, we'd have a conflict if we did it, the July 2nd was the initial date, I think, that it was originally scheduled for. So the Subcommittee did make the recommendation to move the July meeting to July 10th. The only other item of consideration that we discussed was January 1st is listed as our first meeting in 2014. It is the first day of January, which after the last day of December can sometimes be a challenge. But the discussion as we had it was there could be a possibility that the council may choose to have that as our swearing-in day, we're just not sure how that would play out. So the best judgment of the Subcommittee was to recommend this calendar with the July 10th date changed, but with the July 1st date remaining in place, with the understanding that as we get closer and decisions are made, we may want to make a shift in that, in that date. So I'd recommend that to the full committee, the calendar as it exists on your, in your packets for tonight.
Motion to approve by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you very much. Our next topic was the school calendar, and really, the key issue in this was the introduction of some additional professional development, the half-days, professional development days that we've incorporated into our schedule over the last few years. This would be taking us to basically a monthly schedule of the professional development days. During the Subcommittee, we did ask the superintendent for some additional information, it was included, but I do think it would be helpful if we had the superintendent present her argument for wanting to move forward with the full complement of professional development days.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Martin. I would direct the committee to the report of the superintendent that is entitled Use and Cost of District Release Time. As we were leaving the Curriculum Subcommittee that evening, Committee Member Scott and I think Mr. Leary also asked me, just really, how much does it cost the district? What do we save when we have the district release money? And so what I have, I just included in this report of how powerful having the same time across a district has been and thanking this committee and the committee before this that really allowed this to happen in the district. So just for the rationale part of it, I'll give you an example. Last Wednesday, every employee in the district looked at the opening video of what supervision evaluation's supposed to be. So that was provided, so that whole power piece. What I wanted to design for the committee is, when you look at the professional development we do together, it's usually mandated and it usually does not come with additional funding, as many of the initiatives that happen in our field. I figured out that we have, on the average, twelve hundred teachers. And so those are the ones who have to have this mandated training in most cases, although we do have the added benefit of paraprofessionals and administrators. So for an hourly rate, every time we have release time, it's about thirty-six thousand dollars an hour, if we have to pay after-school time, hourly rate of thirty dollars. And that's just a teacher perspective, but I'm taking an average because it's different rates and we don't normally train our parents. So that would be the particular cost per hour. I gave you the example, the second page talks about what professional development has occurred this year. There's a state mandate, ELL change, the mandate in the Commonwealth has been that we do this new WIDA that we've talked about on this committee and Subcommittee in curriculum. We have had around twelve hours of training that we've delivered from our lead teachers that are in every building. They've delivered the training simultaneously to really get that message across that ESL training is for everybody. We all teach diverse learners at different levels. So I gave you a sample of what is, was done this year in the, in the release time across the system simultaneously. And really, when you look at twelve hours of professional learning, it comes to about a total of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, if you do twelve, times that average of twelve hundred employees. So those were the pieces. The other figure you see in here is sixteen thousand dollars. In our negotiation, we put data summits that have been accustomed in Lowell for probably four years, where we look at data as collective groups, we handle it through substitutes, maybe four to six substitutes per building, come in and give teachers an hour and a half to really look at data, talk to their peers, it's aligned. Those sessions, one day of training in that regard, instead of having substitutes in the building releasing staff, costs about sixteen thousand dollars. So if the additional days were given, I had already talked about the Subcommittee that I needed a September for a data summit because if, you all know the calendar of professional learning that's going to happen in education evaluation better than most, but we will have to be looking at data right away in September so people can set their goals, and so we kind of front-loaded it. So if two or three days were given, it would be probably one for an additional data summit, and then there would be additional training, goal-setting and whatnot. So I asked if you have any questions, but I just wanted to set a parameter of what happens on those days and then, in fact, what it would cost if it was broken down by hour in the scope of things. So I welcome any questions you may have or concerns.
Thank you very much. I appreciate getting the additional information because I do think that it certainly, I found it helpful as I was reviewing, reviewing the issue. I think it's a, it's a huge commitment on the part of this district to have, to increase the number of half-days. And I think we, you know, I can say for myself, I do it with all due consideration because I think that it can be a huge imposition on our families. I think that it can represent a real challenge for, for the families in our district to have this, you know, these additional days where students are getting out early. I am prepared, especially looking at the numbers that were presented in this report, to move forward supporting it. And it really is kind of a twofold decision on my part. You know, certainly looking at the numbers, I think that that warrants it. When we look at the amount of money that would be spent on substitutes, that would be spent, you know, bringing, you know, additional staff in and all that, taking the half-day to do this work seems the more economical choice. I'd also say that it does rise for me to the level of importance and substance that I'm willing to move forward sacrificing that time, that school time with students. I think it's something, though, that I would like for us to, and I certainly know that we would, this committee has always paid very close attention to the way professional development is implemented, and I strongly recommend we continue to do that. This is a big step for us, I think, to move to the monthly kind of schedule. We haven't had that kind of schedule in a very long time. And I think it's going to be incumbent upon this committee and on, you know, working certainly very closely with the administration to ensure that we're getting the absolute biggest bang for that investment. Because we owe it to the district and most importantly, we owe it to the students in this, in the school system, that if we're taking that time, we need to ensure that we're using it absolutely in the most effective way so that their learning, which is the ultimate priority, their learning is positively impacted by the time our professionals have to improve their craft and to work together and to kind of, again, set their own priorities for their work with students. So moving forward, I will be supporting this, this calendar as presented, with the full complement of professional, professional development days. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just, I guess, when we talked in the Curriculum Subcommittee, we were looking at, I guess, the proposal, we came really with no recommendation. Or we came, I guess, with a recommendation that we would have certain number of days. Has that calendar changed since that Curriculum Subcommittee? Because I remember the initial calendar, we were going to move one to the month of September and we were going to take Election Day. But it would only be the Election Day, that would be the addition. But if I look at the calendar that we're looking at now, there's actually two additional days, including the Election Day. Am I misunderstanding something or?
No, in your packet, there are two options. The first one is with nine days, none in November because you have the Election Day. Election Day at this particular point, because we have not negotiated, negotiated an additional day, would be everybody home, including staff. So that November is a day off, the Election Day for the safety purposes, because we had not negotiated that extra time. I did not put in the first calendar that you have there, an additional day in November because we have an extra day out and there's Veterans Day and there's Thanksgiving. So there are nine days. So in addition to the six we've enjoyed for the past four years, there are three additional days, November is not one of them. So there is a monthly day on that first calendar. On the second calendar, Mr. Leary, that's attached tonight, it is six days because that was what was requested at the Subcommittee meeting. So I wanted to provide both options for the committee's review this evening.
No, I appreciate that. I guess I have a different understanding. I thought we were additionally going to use the, the Election Day as an additional day and I was going to be in support of that. I'm not going to be in support of additional nine days. I do appreciate as my, sorry, pardon me, I'm sorry. Additional three days, I'm sorry, correct, it was from six to nine. I appreciate what my colleague said, clearly, it's high value in terms of professional development, but it also has a consequence on the flip side. If you're the individual who has to take the day off from work to do this, if you have to pay for childcare for an additional day. Again, it's not easy, it's not something that I, when we initially proposed this, I was definitely, from the six days, we did this a couple of years ago, I was definitely in favor of it, favored from the get-go. I just think in stretching to this, this jump from three days is a, is a little much. So I regrettably, I won't be able to support it at this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this report? An entertaining motion? Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, to go back for a second to that sports-themed schools, which we've talked about numerous times on the floor. And again, I just want to, I want to just name a few people that certainly have helped out in this particular situation. That whole idea took place, and again, we're going back a couple of years ago, with Dennis Cruzyak and with Jennifer Carey. And I want to thank Claire Abrams for sitting down and working with a group of teachers to put in that first phase, should we say? And that first phase, which would include tennis, it would include wrestling and also field hockey. Mike Sheehan handling the wrestling and Lisa Kada with field hockey. And once again, that being woven into the curriculum, and it's not just one school, but it would be multitudes of schools. It just so happens you would have one that just has a theme of that particular sport. But I think also what needs to be brought out, which I think is extremely important, is the fact that, as Ms. Martin brought out in her report, that the U.S. Tennis Association coming forward, that's extremely exciting, that's big news, and I think that we certainly need to congratulate Coach Jennifer Carey for that because she obviously competes, well, she's competed on the national level a number of times. I don't think anybody here would be able to bring that, the U.S. Tennis Association forward to Lowell and to get the same kind of results that she would. And it's pretty exciting when you think about the fact of outfitting all the schools. And again, from what I, excuse me, I've talked with her about it, and she said to me that, you know, it's not unusual that if they see that, you know, first of all, they want to promote the sport, that's what they want to do. And it's not unusual that they would even repair tennis courts and even build tennis courts down, down the road. So again, it's an exciting partnership that I think that we're, we're creating there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we get further into that report, I think we still have to take some kind of action on the school year calendar.
Exactly. What I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a, a motion that we accept the administration's recommended calendar with the full complement of nine professional development days.
Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
No.
Four yeas, three yeas, motion fails.
Next on the report, Ms. Martin?
Sorry, I make a motion that we revert back to the six days of professional development in the calendar. And I look for recommendations from the superintendent in terms of when she wants to select those.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. On the motion, Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Mayor Murphy, I just wanted to point out that in the second option that you have here that goes back to the six full release days, I did include what was approved years ago for Lowell High School in the NIASC. They always have had a shorter release time, so I included those because those were voted in the past. So Lowell High School will, on this calendar, just because it was the existing practice, will have, so when you see the release day- will have, so when you see the release days, there are two kinds. One are the six district and the others are the Lowell High. And I do recommend that because of their lack of common planning and a number of other initiatives with the NIESC self-study coming up, that that continues. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify that. There are six full, whole district early release days and three additional Lowell High, just for your information. I also want to point out in this calendar, the recommendation of the Subcommittee was to change the holiday. Remember, we had an original thought, it was voted unanimously to change Christmas holiday to make sure that we return back on the second of, on the Thursday. So I did include that in the calendar. So at this particular time, you're all voting on six release days across the district, the additional Lowell High, that change back for the holiday to go back to school on the second. So those are all incorporated in that second draft that you had there, that we had reviewed at the Subcommittee. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikic?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Six shays, one nay, approved.
Ms. Martin, further on the report?
Actually, that would conclude our Subcommittee report, and I'd put that forth as a report of progress.
Motion to accept is report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikic. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have the Facility Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, April 17, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 17, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have reports of the Superintendent, Lowell High School Air Force Junior ROTC award. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report that was sent to me from Headmaster Rose Merrick, where he informed us that there were some awards that we have enjoyed. The ROTC Unit Massachusetts 771 was awarded Distinguished Unit Award with Merit for Academic Year 2012, 2013. They, out of 867 units, only 64, or 7%, were selected, so we wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, our instructors enjoyed awards, all three of them. So our three instructors, Lieutenant Peter D'Amico, Sergeant David Smith, Master Sergeant Kevin Casili, also had outstanding instructor awards for the academic year. And out of about 30 in the state, only 112 outstanding instructor awards were awarded out of 1,880 instructors national. And so we're very proud and we wanted to bring that to your attention this evening.
Thank you, and congratulations to them. Any further discussion on this report? Motion to accept is report of progress, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have the report of the Secretary of Education, Matt Malone's visit to the Merklin School. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. It was last week that Secretary of Education Malone came to the Merklin School. He spent probably an hour and a half and really enjoyed going through the Merklin. At the Merklin School, there was a common planning time for fourth-grade teachers where he sat and listened to just how teachers planned. He was so complimentary of the work he had seen. He also was very intrigued by how, with the support and the plan in the Merklin, that the teacher training has been so powerful. And he did comment on how the Merklin School had risen in achievement, almost number two in the state, especially in mathematics. So he was very aware of the work. He then went through classrooms, spoke quite a bit about the things that we've enjoyed in Merklin, the alignment, what in fact we have reached. He saw children working at every turn and was very excited about the Merklin School. He wants to come back to the district. He was very excited about our curriculum mapping. He stopped and played basketball because he's a physical ed guy, so he stopped and played basketball with the kids on the way by. He really enjoyed it. But I wanted to make you aware of the visit because he was very excited by the work we were doing in Lowell, and it was very positive. Next time I'll bring him to a middle school. He's very intrigued by the high school because as many of you know, Matt Malone was the high school, was the Superintendent of Brockton, and they have the same size high school as Lowell High, so his next visit might be the high school. But I welcomed his guidance and he had many nice suggestions, but he was very impressed by us, and I wanted you to be aware of that visit. So any questions you may have, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Entertaining motion to accept the report and place on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikic. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have a report on the Joint Committee on Education, Educator Evaluation. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, as the committee knows through the negotiations that we, that took place last summer, that a joint commission of educator evaluation was part of the process. And so we have begun those meetings. I have appointed, from my representation, Principal Liam Skinner, Principal Wendy Crocker-Robege, representing a middle school and a K-8 school, and Principal Jason DeCarlo from Lowell High School. I have Department Chair Suzanne Keefe, and I also have Hostmaster Deirdre Haley. And additionally, we have teachers representing our level of the organization, just so you'll know who they are. I have Bill Donahue from Lowell High School, I have Paula Sweeney from Lowell High School, Colleen Pease from the Sullivan School, Jessica Weintraub from the McCullough and Pina Maggio from the Robinson School. Additionally, UTL President Paul Georges is present at every meeting, as well as the conveners, our combination of UTL Vice President, Executive Vice President Kate McLaughlin, and Assistant Human Resource Director Edith Labran. And so we're really working through all of the components of what's coming up. Our first meeting was just getting together, sending ground rules, trying to looking at the whole, really looking at the whole process, looking at the work that has to evolve in the next few weeks. We have, this might ring a bell to all you all, we are meeting every Monday. Sounds like last summer, but we're meeting every Monday, coming together for three hours to really work on the moving pieces. As I alluded to earlier in the meeting, we created an opening video so everybody can get that constant message, collaboration, reflection, hard work. What's going to, what do the rubrics look like? What does the teaching need to look like across the board? We had an activity that we looked at of concerns, hopes and fears, and so we have lots of feedback across the district of what we have to work on. So that was the first meeting. We had our second meeting last week and we continued that. This will go on. It will be a collaborative across the board this evening in the negotiations that were negotiated, and the Unit B piece will be addition. There is a team that's also added because that's part of it. So I will determine with Unit B administration if the administrators want to join the same team or, because it's very similar work, we'll figure that out. But what is very important to me, that is clear about what the expectations are and that is a fair process, that people have to look at data and how that's going to be unpacked. It's very complicated. I tried to simplify it. I did put the rules of this Joint Committee that we had decided at negotiations, but the last page is a Jean Franco original, that really talks about the moving parts of how complicated the educator evaluation portion is. And so this talks about how there's an implementation plan that we're designing right now to make sure each piece of that regulation is put into place, and the two steering committees will come together and then we will have subcommittees. This is a joint committee. It's almost like an advisory board. So we're in lots of committees, but this is more an advisory board that makes sure that we are following the letter of the contract and the letter of the regulation, and that's what this work is about. At the next Personnel Subcommittee, I'll be talking about more details of what we've already done for training to keep you up to speed. But it's a very important part of our negotiation, a very important group, and I just wanted to make you aware of the progress and what we're looking at for next steps.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I know we have our Personnel Subcommittee meeting schedules, is it next week? Excellent. And I think I may have mentioned this, that I think it would be really helpful to have, and I would, you know, open up the invitation to the full team if you felt that was appropriate. I had focused on having the principals in attendance, the administrators in attendance. And I'll say that my, obviously, the timing is becoming more and more concerning. I mean, as we get to the end of this year, this needs to be up and running for September. That is a huge task for the administration, for principals, for teachers, for this group. It is a lot to get accomplished in a very short period of time. I think the weekly meeting schedule is wise. What I'd like to be able to see, and I would hope we'd be able to see it at this next Personnel Subcommittee, would be the implementation timeline so that we could really see when administrators are going to be starting this process. I'd like to hear from them too about their, kind of, honestly, their approaches, how they're looking at the ways they're going to implement this in their own school buildings. No question there will be some, you know, each administrator will be addressing this in a slightly different way. But I mean, obviously, the ones that you've chosen to be on this committee are the ones that we're really counting on in terms of their expertise and their experience to ensure that this gets done correctly right out of the gate. So I'd really like to hear from those individuals about their, kind of, the philosophy they're bringing to this, if they feel, you know, how they're feeling about the tools they've been given, and how, I guess, optimistic they are about the ambitious timeline that's been set, and if they feel they have the appropriate materials and supports to be able to make this happen effectively in September. So just as we move forward, looking at what that Personnel Subcommittee would be, that's the kind of information that I think would be really helpful for the Subcommittee and for the committee as a whole to be aware of.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Superintendent?
The Subcommittee's tomorrow evening, is tomorrow evening, and we will have people there. I did forward reports ahead, the talks about the training. The educators, the evaluators have had consistent training throughout the year, so they are more well-versed, and we will have people there to speak about the progress. Just so this committee knows, we have already asked our teachers to save the two days after they get out of school for training, the eight-hour training, there's an eight-hour training component, and we're looking at shifting Race to the Top. So we have a training session that is able to occur before school gets out, that is going to be filmed and available on the website, and there's going to be some way that we can get technology. And then there'll be some August training. It's a mandated training, so we want to get as many people as we possibly can at the end of the year. And the training is really based on the Department of Education mandated training that is available on their website. Of course, as everything, we're going to customize it for our needs in this district. So those are the pieces. But tomorrow evening, we can go into more detail, Ms. Martin, and yes, we will have people there to-
The administrators will be there, okay.
Yes.
You know, I think that that will be a great starting point. I suspect there'll be more questions, I mean, in all honesty, so we may want to prepare in advance and understand that there'll be another Personnel Subcommittee sooner than typical. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? Entertaining motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Ross Sikic, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have four convention and conference requests. An entertaining motion to take all four together, so moved by Ms. Ross Sikic, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Motion to approve all four by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikic?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. We have a communication note of thank you from the family of Charlotte Landry for the moment of silence at the March 20, 2013 meeting. We have under professional personnel, members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby requests to nominate 33 sick leave days to Krista Siopps-Clark, an occupational therapist of the Greenwich and McCavney Schools. Entertaining motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikic. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikic?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn. So moved by Ms. Ross Sikic, seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway on the motion.
Before we adjourn, could I just mention one thing?
Mr. Conway?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention the benefit that took place for the greater Lowell victims of the marathon that was held at the UMass Lowell Conference Center. And I know that we were all there at that. It was an incredible event, and it, place was absolutely packed with individuals wanting to help out. And I want to congratulate the people that put that together, in particular, Mayor Patrick Murphy and Robert Gignac, Dan Murphy and Mark Lynch in particular, and I know that there are other people, obviously, but again, I congratulate you people for stepping up to the plate and helping these people. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for attending, and a number of you also helped throughout tonight, so I thank you for that. We did have a motion. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. We stand adjourned.